Oh.
Oh, wow. That's a lot.
And welcome to the October nineteenth meeting of the Auburn School Committee. I'll do that again. Welcome, everyone, to the October nineteenth meeting of the Auburn School Committee. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start with introductions to my right, please.
Dan Poison, Ward five. Ryan Bellmatt, Ward four.
Clarissa Perez, Armand Arias, Ward one.
Pam Hart, Ward two.
Karen Matthew, Ward three.
Connie Brown, Superintendent.
Eric Godier, at large.
Pam Albert, at large.
Jason Lebec, Mayor.
Julian Dumay, Student Representative.
Abigail Foché, Student Representative.
Gabriel Despero, Student Representative.
Mark Conrad, Business Manager.
Sue Doris, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, thank you all for attending this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of tonight's agenda, along with the approval of the minutes from the October, back me up, meeting, October fifth meeting. The minutes were online, for those of you, they weren't linked to this agenda, or the agenda that I have, they were linked online, though. So can I entertain a motion to approve, please?
Motion.
Thank you, Brian. You have a second? Pam, do you want a second?
Second.
All right. Questions, comments, objections? All right, all those in favor? Thank you. Motion passes. All right, it's open to public participation. We have anyone from the public who would like to come speak to the school committee this evening? I think you're here for presentation. All right, I'll close public participation. Next item on the agenda is the presentation for jobs for main grads. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Yes, the mic should be live.
Great. Good evening, everyone. My name is Matt St. John. I am the Chief Operating Officer for JMG. Dr. Brown, thank you for having us here, and thank you all at the school board for having us here tonight. We're passing around just a flyer with some information. For those of you that are maybe familiar with JMG or not familiar with JMG, we're really here today just to talk about the impact that our program has had on the school district here, specifically at Edward Little High School. We started two programs here, and we're going to get a chance to talk a little bit about each of those. Kelly Barassar, South Regional Director, is going to come up and speak in a little bit as well. But want to just give a quick overview. We're going to, we actually have some student speakers here to talk about the impact that JMG has had on them. Before I do that, though, let me just do a quick background on JMG again, for those of you that may be unfamiliar with us. We are an educational statewide nonprofit. We serve about 12,000 students a year, ranging from the sixth grade all the way through college. And we have been very, very fortunate here over the last few years to be at Edward Little High School. We started our high school completion program back in 2018, and our high school core program back in 2019. I'm going to have, again, Kelly come up and talk, acknowledge our couple of specialists we have here. We have a couple of students that are going to speak and talk about what the program has meant to them. But as you can see from this sheet that I shared, both our high school completion program, which is a program that focuses specifically on some of those students that are most at risk for not graduating, we serve those students that are either stopped out or on the cusp of stopping out. And we work with those students to, first and foremost, have them graduate, and then get them on the right track when it comes to their post-secondary aspirations. We've been really very successful and happy, even over, you can see over these last few years, our, even though we are working with students that are most at risk for graduating, we've had 100% graduation rate for those students that we're serving, that we're very proud of. Our high school core program is one that we are working with a broader group of students from nine through 12, that we are working to get their aspirations lined up with what they want to be doing, first and foremost graduating, but then also helping them pursue their post-secondary credentials and get them on their way to their career. You'll see, and by some of these statistics, too, the, some of the students that we serve in our program are some of those most underserved populations, so students that are economically disadvantaged, students that are in the foster care system, students that have disabilities, students that face social inequities. So we purposefully recruit and have those students be a part of our program. And again, we have been very, very proud to be able to be here in this community, again, for about five years with the high school completion program, and four years with the, our high school core program. Before I introduce Kelly and have her come up, I do want to just mention a couple of other sort of value-add pieces that we're going to be able to bring to your district this year. One of them is a very special partnership that we've started with the organization called Full Plates, Full Potential. It's another nonprofit organization that really focuses on accessibility, school nutrition. And we had a pilot year where we were able to have a lot of student-led projects being developed in conjunction with school nutrition departments. And so they actually created some opportunities to increase accessibility, increase nutrition at school depart, at different schools. We're very happy that we're going to be able to bring that opportunity, we're going to be able to have some, a $5,000 worth project that students are going to lead, to bring to the school department here at Edward Little High School that we're very excited about. The other piece I just want to mention, too, that we're incredibly eager to get started, and we have started in some ways, so JMG was the recipient of some of the American Rescue Plan dollars. And because of that, we're part of the career exploration program and are going to be able to provide, for rising juniors and seniors, a paid, meaningful work experience. So a lot of the career exploration that we already do, we're going to be connecting juniors and seniors with employers, getting them a work experience, and getting them $500 as well. So they'll earn that badge, they'll have that experience and $500. But again, it's just another value to be able to bring to this district that we're really proud and happy to do. So I can stand up here all day and talk about the impact that we hope our program has had and will continue to have here, but really, it's some of our students that have gone through the program that are the ones I really wanted you to hear from the most. So I'm going to turn things over to Kelly Barassar, who's going to acknowledge our specialists that have operated those programs, and introduce our student speakers. So thank you. Before I do, though, I do have some business cards that I'll share in case there's questions. If we don't have time, I know we've got a short period of time here, if you have any follow-up questions. Kelly.
Thanks, Matt, and thank you all for giving us a little bit of time here tonight. We really do appreciate it. I just wanted to acknowledge the, the work on the ground here through my two specialists. We wouldn't have these students here to share their stories with you without them. TJ Abacha has been with us since 2017, and as you know, our tagline is student-centered, results-driven, and we, we should have picked him up to, you know, be the definition of that earlier than we did. He is so incredibly student-centered. He's a great advocate for all the students that he reaches and works with. He's well-respected by the students and the staff alike, and he's just, he doesn't quit. So thank you to TJ. He's the high school completion core specialist, completion specialist, I'm sorry. Aaron Lewis is our core specialist, the classroom program, and he joined us in 2019. And as we all know, that school year ended very remotely, let's just say, which was really tough for a new program to get off the ground, but as you'll see by those numbers, he's continued to grow it without some of those really foundational pieces, relationship building, and the community connections, done an incredible job doing that, given, given the climate that we've, we've seen the past few years. And he's also really able to connect with students very well, too. So, but I'm going to let the students share with you, this is what it's all about. Greca, if you want to come up and, and share your, this is TJ's former student.
Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome, everyone, at Auburn School District Board Meeting. My name is Grass Amuzala. I am 20 years old. I'm originally from Angola. I have been in the United States since 2019, and I graduated from a Duarte Little High School in 2021. I go accepted to Washington County Community College to pursue my dream job as an electrical engineer. I want to help improve main transportation by working for electrical car companies, assisting with projects to install more traffic and streetlights, and eventually becoming a successful master of nutrition and electrical engineer. I am the 2022 Student of the Year at Washington County Community College, and I am here to represent the JMG students and to talk how, to talk about how JMG has helped me along the way from high school to college. JMG is an extensive program for bridging an attention that begins in high school and runs smoothly through college. JMG collaborate with mains, public media, and high school, community institutions, and university system to assist students in achieving their full potential and offer 143 programs. My experience with the JMG has been amazing. I should not have been here in front of you if it wasn't for a JMG specialist who helped me to obtain my transcript from Angola, so I could graduate from high school and go to college. JMG assisted me with all financial aid for my college fee, dorm, meals, and other personal expenses. JMG not only helped me with my finances, but they also support me mentally and morally to not quit college when my dad situation happened. The JMG community has a place in my, my heart. Your generosity has motivated me to support others and give back to the community. I hope that one day I will be able to assist students in accomplishing their ambition in the same way that you have helped me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So he is at our, one of our college success sites, at Washington County Community College, you know, as, as he mentioned. Our next student is at Central Main Community College, where we also have a JMG program, and that is Morgan.
Hi. My name is Morgan Matton, and.
Morgan, bring the microphone down a little closer. There you go.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Morgan Matton, and I have been part of the JMG curriculum for three years now. So when I started high school, I was doing pretty good, and my junior year, I got emancipated. It took my life for a turn, and my grades started slipping because of court dates and just a lot of things about figuring out the real world as an emancipated minor. So I got enrolled in the JMG program because of the resources and the help that they could provide. So my favorite thing about JMG has to be the teachers and how dedicated they are to helping their students and advocating for them. I can wholeheartedly say that I would not have made it to where I am today without the support of TJ and Mr. Lewis. When I was not able to be there in school, and when things got overwhelming, they would reach out to my counselor for me. They would work around and try to figure out a schedule that could actually bring me back into the building instead of just kind of disappearing for a while. They would catch up with me on, like, every other day-to-day basis, and they would just say, like, hey, how's things going? Part of their curriculum as well allows for Workday Wednesdays. So any class that I was slipping in, or any class that I was having struggles in, they would actually sit down and say, hey, this is something that you need to work on, how can we help you do that? With reaching out to teachers for me, or just honestly helping me out themselves with their knowledge. Some of them are not math teachers, but, yeah. Another thing is jobs for main graduates. Everything that people say, like, we should be taught this in school, is what they're teaching. So the real-world applications are amazing. They teach you what business appropriate is, they teach you, like, how to make a resume, and not just the fake ones that you may make in other classes. They actually provide you with the resources and materials to be able to make a real resume and have real people verify your work history. And the school closet was a big one. So a lot of you know, we do have a homeless student population, and the closet provides clothes for them and anything that they may need that were donated. So JMG actually brought their classes into it and helped me complete my community service hours by helping fill out the closet and organize it and make it a beautiful space for everyone, so that they could get the resources that they needed. Since graduating, I am now enrolled in the JMG at the college as well. I intend to be a nurse and further my education with probably a business degree or something. But JMG has helped me in so many ways, and I just want to reiterate that the dedication that these teachers have is amazing, and they are some of the best people to ever enter that high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. Thank you, Greca. With whatever time we have left, I just wanted, if there was any questions from anybody here, I wanted to take the time for that right now.
School committee members of questions.
Sure.
Can I just ask you, you said something about a full plates of, and I didn't get the rest of that.
Sure, yeah, no. So Full Plates, Full Potential, which is that second-to-last piece down there, is a, as a nonprofit organization, and they really focus on creating more accessibility for school meals. And so we had enough, the opportunity last year to create a partnership with them, and really create a student-led project, where they were able to work with school nutrition departments to create some solutions. One of the pieces, for instance, is they'll actually create a student survey and get feedback from the student body on what sort of things can we be doing to make schools more nutritious, make more than, more accessible, and then providing a solution for that. And so, again, something we were able to do, start last year, learned a lot from that process, and eager to be able to bring that opportunity to Edward Little this year. Sure.
Any other questions? Jason?
So what we're trying to provide is really something that's equitable to our students as well as businesses. So when we say meaningful work experience, we really think about that in broad terms, broad career exploration. For some students, that may mean doing a 40-hour internship at a business, but we also realize that for some students, they may need more true career exploration. It may mean doing five hours with this business, it may be doing innovation, informational interviews, job shadows, really, we really want this to be a very student-centered project, so the students can get a, a meaningful experience, but it's not a one-size-fits-all. And that's really kind of the philosophy we've had with a lot of the things we do. But at the end of the day, you know, giving them that meaningful experience, they'll have those 40 hours, a badge, and $500 in their pocket as well. So that's some of the role that TJ and Aaron will be doing, working with the business communities. We also have some workforce liaisons on our staff that are helping to make some of those business connections. It's really the employers and the students we want to make positive connections with to give them that real-world experience. Yeah, sure.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? Other than congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you.
And much appreciation from the Auburn School Department for the great work that you do. Thank you.
Appreciate that. I'll leave some business cards here if anybody has any questions.
Sure. Thank you so very much this evening. Thank you to those of you who came to speak this evening as well. Congratulations on your success with the program. Thank you very much. All right, next is our student representative report. Abby, are you on this evening? Okay. Thank you.
All right, good evening. Tonight I'm going to be sharing a presentation that was not created by me. It was created by a group of students at Edward Little High School. They asked not to be named, so I won't go that far.
Sure.
But they sent out a survey, school-wide, asking students to fill out a questionnaire about how they felt about flex. For all of you who do not have a student within Edward Little High School, flex is a period of time between second period and third, in which we get roughly about, like, 45, 30 minutes in order to accomplish what we need. On Tuesdays, student leadership council members go to freshman homerooms, and they do the, meet with freshmen, they ask questions, they get them more integrated into the EL community. And then Thursday is an open day where everyone can go, get help from teachers, complete homework, and it's basically just a free time. So this is the response to should the number of flex days in a typical school week be changed? So out of 105, these were the demographics. And then the next question was how many days of the typical school week do you think we should have for flex? So overall, this was roughly saying that they want the number of flex days to increase. It's currently only held on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but most of the responses were every day, which is what we had last year. And then during the previous years, how did you spend the majority of your flex time? This wouldn't apply to freshmen because they weren't in the.
This wouldn't apply to freshmen because they weren't in the building at the time. And this was a multiple selection, so that's why the numbers are a little off with like the 99s, 73s, 80s. But yeah, most of the responses were catching up and working on homework. And I've talked to a few students within the building who have filled out this form on flex, and there may have reasons behind increasing the number of flex days to every day, potentially four days a week, five days a week. Was to be able to have more flexibility in their schedule during flex. Most meetings are held for Executive Board, Student Leadership. All of these clubs are held during flex, so conflicts happens. I know it's happened with me and Gillie a couple times where we have a Student Leadership meeting at the same time as an Executive Board meeting. So we have to kind of pick and choose and miss out on one or the other because we can't necessarily hold them after school due to sports. We have a little break time right now between fall and winter, but yeah. And catching them on homework, working with teachers for students who aren't able to go after school due to busing, transportation, it just would help with having it increased. But again, these were the only questions that were on the survey sent out. If this were to be reconsidered, I myself would recreate this survey to have it more like open-ended questions, have more examples, just to get more info on this. But these were the findings of the students who sent out this survey. So are there any questions?
I do. Abby, so as student leaders, how are you, how are you working with administrators to make sure that this survey gets in? It's great to report here, it's good to know what kids are thinking about flex, but as far as the school committee goes, that really runs in the school department's lane, how they spend your educational minutes? So how is you, how are you as community, sorry, as school leaders, working with admin on this type of stuff?
We've been kind of talking about it a little bit. I know this survey was sent just to students. We didn't really get any much teacher input, but we are planning on working more with like principals, assistant principals on this issue.
Okay. Because that was going to be my follow-up question. And what about the education, for the educator's perspective of how flex is used? Do they see it as valuable as the students are seeing it?
Yeah. There's been a, it's been mostly like half and half because I know some teachers do more class time, learning-based in the class, and then they'll do assessments during flex, which is another reason why kids are missing out on these meetings such as Student Leadership, Executive Board, all these other clubs. So it's pretty split, half and half. Some teachers recognize it as a time where they can work more one-on-one with students who are falling behind in the schedule, and others see it as not necessarily a useful time.
Okay. Be interesting to survey teachers, but like I said, this is in the school department's lane, not the school committee's lane, so this is sort of one of those things, where are you going to do with this information now that you have it? Any other questions, Pam?
Just one other, I guess, observation would be, did you guys ask what grade respondents were in? Like, do you have a breakdown of?
Yeah, this wasn't my survey. If I were to do a follow-up, I would ask that question because, keeping in mind, this isn't an experience that freshmen were able to experience due to being at the middle school. So, and I'm pretty sure this survey was mostly filled out, I think freshmen kind of just put it aside, but it was mostly filled out by sophomore and senior respondents.
Okay. Interesting. Pam?
I'm not sure if Abby's the person to ask, answer this, but I guess my only question is why, if we were doing this every day last year, why is it only two days now? Like, what was the reasoning behind that?
I believe the experience for shortening it was because a lot of staff felt it wasn't really, I guess, necessary. It's more, it was to lengthen the time in the classroom, learning with like first, second, third, fourth period. Because while there were students completing homework and catching up from behind assignments, some kids took it as like a time to kind of communicate with friends. It was more like, some teachers saw it, the students just meeting to catch up, do more like relaxed, laissez-faire kind of meeting time rather than catch-up time for assignments, but I believe that's why we shortened it.
Interesting. Yeah. So I'd say work with administration and because schedules are probably already starting to be built a year on out, so pass it along to people who can use the information for sure. But thank you for sharing it with us this evening. All right. Any other school committee rep reports this evening? Nope, seeing none. Okay. Dr. Brown, superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Chairperson Matthew. The first item I'd like to discuss with the school committee is the issue of remote days and remote meals. And I'd like to turn to Mr. Conrad. He's been in communication with the Maine DOE and our Director of Nutrition to talk about what this option would look like for us. So Mark?
So in order to be able to provide remote days, we have to be able to offer parents the opportunity to be provided with meals they can take home for that day through our food service program, and it has to be at our expense. So Chris Piercy is working with Peter Robinson so we can create a simple online forum for parents who would like to sign up in advance for having a both breakfast and a lunch, come home with their child or children for the next day. We had actually done that at some point earlier in the pandemic, and we had a relatively small number of parents who signed up, but we're hoping we'll get a good outpouring of interest in it because we really want to be able to feed students and support families. Once we have a list for each school, anytime a remote day is called, the staff will very quickly put together a bag lunch and breakfast for students, and they'll work with the office staff or teachers to make sure it gets into the hands of students to go home with them for the next day. The cost of that will be $2.51 per meal. That's what Chris Piercy has identified as the actual cost of labor and supplies, and they will then bill us for that amount for each meal provided. When you think about it, if we had 100 parents sign up, it'd only be $251. If it was 1,000, it'd be $2,500, but that's a small price in the size of our budget for, for the ability to provide those remote days and feed our students. That requirement that we have to pay for from our operating budget is a determination from the Department of Education. It's not a local decision. You happy to answer any questions you might have?
Pam?
What do you mean by remote days? I mean, it's not like a day, like a snow day, because you don't know until the day arrives.
Well, the issue is it's still a school day. It's not like a snow day. It's a school day, but children aren't in the building, so the food service program, federal program requires that you have meals available to students. So the best way we can provide that is the bag lunch to send home with students for the next day, and it will need all of the nutritional components.
Right. So it's given out the day before.
So it's given out the day before, so the pressure will be on the superintendent to make that call early enough in the day, not only so students can grab and staff can grab their laptops, but also so the food service staff can quickly bag up those lunches, and they'll already have the supplies in their, in their stocks, so it shouldn't take long.
So this doesn't impact, right now, the school calendar that was approved, the first, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, the first, I want to make sure we, we go back to this, the first three days of would be inclement weather, traditional, snow days canceled, no school, no buses, no food, just, it's a snow day.
Correct.
Following that, should we use up those three inclement weather days, and now we want to call a remote school day instead of an inclement weather day, then that would be the opportunity to then, we could still continue school days but remotely, provided we have given kids their meals. Now, let's say there's some type of a surprise storm, and we don't realize the day before, and it's the fourth day where you would need to call potentially a remote day at that point, there are, there could be a chance that it's just too late and it's a traditional snow day. Yes.
And I think the issue with that is not only the food service program, but there has to be enough notice so everybody's taking home their computers and they can work remotely.
Right. Right. Okay. Any other questions?
Well, I know Pam had a question too, but related to that, I don't want to jump.
My question was, thank you. My question was, we're putting this online, but I do know that there are parents who may not have access to that. I came across that a couple years ago when I was delivering food, that one parent asked me, can we still have the menus in paper? So are we looking at doing different ways of trying to communicate?
I think we will be, and we'll work with principals so we can get a notice home. And I think Dr. Brown will also be putting it in her notice about remote days as well.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So on remote days and snow days, right now, our policy states that the first three are inclement weather days, no school, no remote days, and then the fourth and fifth one. Do you have the flexibility to actually say, okay, it's the second snow day, but we know it's coming, and this happens often, so it's going to hit us Wednesday, we're not going to have school, but it's only our second event? Could you call that as a remote day? So in other words, you're not going in sequence, so it could be the first, you know, surprise snowstorm, it's no school, but the second one we know is going to happen? Call that as a remote versus a no-school day? That way you have more flexibility?
Well, I would appreciate the opportunity for flexibility. However, the way the calendar was published and presented to families was the first three days are traditional snow days. And I think that's the way people are managing their home calendar, is that whatever school is called for the first three times is a traditional snow day.
Any other questions, Brian?
Yeah, I just think we should make a note of that for the next calendar because the way it's shipping up, we'll never have a remote day because snow days are always going to be on the fly, they're going to be called at 4:30, 5 o'clock in the morning, and you're not going to have that chance to do that. So I think with the next calendar, we definitely want to have that flexibility so that if we know a storm's, if we know a big snowstorm's coming on a Friday, we can just say, you know what, that's going to be a remote day. It's not going to count against the three. So I think we ought to do that for the next, the next calendar.
That's a good point.
Good point. All right. Any other questions, comments? Oh, yes, Gabe.
Is there another case scenario where a remote day is like, it's a snow day, other than a snow day, a remote day is like still considered a remote day? Because you said it could range, right? So I don't know what other case scenario, like what other case scenario would it be considered a remote day other than a snow day? Yeah.
What else have you called school off for?
Well, there have been other emergencies. For example, at Park Ave, we closed on whatever day it was this week because of a gas smell and sent the students home at half-day. So it really is, it's hard to identify all of the potential school closures that it might be. But typically, it's for weather.
Any other questions? Pam?
Actually, this is just a comment that I wanted to say to the Auburn School Department. I think that you guys handled that really well, the gas leak, and I really appreciated the communication that went out. And from the feedback that I've gotten, parents were very happy because they, even though it was a very scary situation and they were frightened for their kids, at least they had the whereabouts to know what was going on, how it was handled, and both schools, Fairview and Park Ave, did an admirable job at trying to contain the kids and keep them safe, and I just wanted to give you kudos for that.
Thank you. On that note, it was a great example of the collaboration between and among all the city departments. Not only the school department, but the police and the fire played significant roles in the very smooth process that we went through that morning. And it was a good, good opportunity for us all to realize how we can benefit from this type of an emergency going forward, but it's, it was a good communication exercise. I think we all felt that way.
Thank you very much.
So next up on my agenda is the Auburn Induction Academy. And so Michelle, if you would come up and give the committee a briefing. You may recall that at the end of the 21-22 school year, the committee approved a pilot program for new educators in the Auburn School Department. And it was because we believed we needed to do a better job supporting them and providing guidance, support, networking, and it's been underway, and Michelle is the leader of that. And so, how's it going?
Very well. I am pleased to report, and I'm happy to be here to update all of you on something that many of us are becoming quickly very proud of. So we have 37 members, we call them our cohort, 22-23 cohort, or our first AIA, Auburn Induction Academy cohort. We hired, Auburn hired many more staff members this year, including ed techs and coaches and kitchen staff and whatnot, but the Auburn Induction Academy is focused on our professional teaching staff. We have in that very eclectic group of 37 wonderful educators, we have some who have 19 years of teaching experience that were lucky enough, came to Auburn to join us, and they are part of that, and they add a very valuable piece to that group. And then we have teachers who are right out of college learning alongside of them. So the, the vision of the Auburn Induction Academy is to bring that very valuable cohort together once a month. We meet on the third Thursday of each month, and we meet from 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock at Walton School. The cafeteria there provides us the perfect venue to all gather at nice round tables and have really nice collaborative conversations. So the purpose of our meeting is to create, to continue to create a very strong cohort of new educators that are hopefully falling in love with being here in Auburn and will be here for a very long time. Our meetings are really structured. We try to keep them fun and upbeat, but they're always purposeful and are structured in a very careful way. That starts with always a follow-up of the last meeting. So every meeting ends with an exit ticket where we ask for feedback about what they've learned in the meeting and what they need next. And then we use that information, like good teachers do, to then structure our instruction from there, so that always helps us build our next agenda. So some of the topics that we've already covered in our opening induction meeting at the beginning of the year, and then our September meeting, were, for example, let's say, human resources requirements, meeting technology coaches, AEA membership, teacher evaluation, certification, instructional strategies like vote with your feet, informative assessment strategies like the use of an exit ticket. Tomorrow's agenda, we'll be meeting at Walton School. You're all, of course, anytime welcome to join us. We are going to be debriefing last month's feedback. There'll be a presentation on family engagement and the use of a parking lot for engagement and informative assessment. We will do a reflection on parent-teacher conferences, which are happening as we speak. So that'll be nice because it'll be the following day. And then we'll, of course, always have an exit ticket at the end so that we can use that information to build next month's agenda. So that is more or less an overview of what's happening with AIA right now, and we're getting some really nice feedback from the staff every month about how they're using the information we're presenting to them and how they're continuing to build their network at your own school and across the district. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, school committee members?
I can say I wish this was in every district right now. So thank you for taking the lead with this and recognizing the need and for your purposeful planning and for apps. I've heard some really great feedback from folks that I know are attending, so thank you for all your hard work with this.
Thank you. No, it's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So the last item on my, my list is to remind the school committee that in November, on the 16th, we have a budget workshop. And this traditionally kicks off the formal start of the budget season, and I would like to ask you to send me your suggestions for the topics you would like to see covered. In the past, we've covered things like fixed costs, costs associated with the EL debt, costs associated with any settled agreements that have been or need to be included, items that are on our horizon, such as electricity, which I think Mr. Conrad is expected to go up 90 to 100% in the next budget year, so that's 100, hundreds of thousand dollars of increase. So we bring that to your attention. We will talk a little bit about health insurance, since health insurance is a significant portion of our budget, but we want to hear from you. I want to hear from you in terms of what you would like to hear and what would be helpful information. We typically then have a follow-up meeting in December with the Auburn City Council, and I don't think that date has been set, but traditionally, it's the fourth, third Monday, right, of December. Ugly sweaters this year, again?
Considering, I think you and I were the only participating members, maybe Karen too, yeah.
So anyway.
I'd encourage more participation if we're going to do it.
And both, both meetings are an opportunity for the committee to have some dialogue about some very important things for the 23-24 school department operating budget. So that's that, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Dr. Brown? All right. Seeing none. Moving on. My school committee chairperson's report, just to let you know, I have all the links and the info needed for this Saturday's delegate meeting, and I believe Dr. Brown has submitted the registration.
Yes, she has.
For that. So I am good to go for the delegate meeting. All right. Any questions about that? All right. Mr. Mayor, City Council update, can you update the school committee on the several questions that are appearing on this year's voting ballot, please?
Sure. First of all, let me just go through a little bit of the procedure and why they're on the ballot. I'm going to refrain from talking about each individual ballot question because after consulting with legal, it doesn't want to, I don't want to inadvertently say something that might be swaying someone's decision one way or the other. So every 15 years, by our charter, that governs both the municipal and the years, by our charter that governs both the municipal and the school department, we must review our charter. We did that over a period of about a year, looking at different aspects. We had subcommittees. We also asked for the school committee chairwoman, Karen Matthews, and the superintendent, as well as Adam Hanson, prior finance chair, to review with the school committee any potential changes on the school committee section of the charter, which I believe you all did somehow, some way as a group separate from the council.
So back in, that was back in November, don't want me to interrupt, but just back in November of 2020, half of, half the folks, I believe, were not here. So it was done with the
It was a different term.
School committee at the time. Yes, it was a different term.
And it was a different term for the city council as well. Hold on, let me pull up my notes. So you presented to us on November 30th of 2020, several recommendations for verbiage changes to the charter. We accepted those changes, as's, whereas, and then we voted to put them on the ballot post-legal review. That takes a while, and it has to be in the next general election, which is this November. So yes, everybody who's a registered voter that requests an absentee ballot or goes to the polls and votes, we'll see several questions on the ballot concerning charter amendment changes. I'd like to answer any other questions I could. You do in your packet have a sample ballot. I would encourage any voter with any questions to look at the sample ballot and look at the instructions and read it and understand it. And if you had any questions, then please talk to the city clerk. That would be Susan Clement Delaire.
Absolutely. Pam?
My first question is, if this is supposed to go through the next election, why didn't it go through 2021? Why, has it waited?
General election, post, was post-attorney review. So that's this year, 2022.
And also, is there a way that we can maybe put somewhere, either on the city website or the school, the school department's website, exactly what you've just stated so that there's more clarification, so that when people do go to vote, they are not asking so many questions? I know we've been inundated with questions as to what does this mean, what does this mean? And we've replied, but I really wish that there was a place that the general public could go to and have this explained to them.
On, on the city website, under the government tab, okay, there is an election, there's an election section that gives you sample ballots and any explanation that we can provide as municipal government by law. Because this is a city charter change, and regardless of its complexity or significance, I'm trying to be very careful with my words, we have to make sure that we do not enter into any type of verbiage or explanation that could be considered electioneering.
Well, I'm not saying sway people's decisions. I'm just asking.
Everything that we have, that we can have, is up online under the government section of the city of Auburn website with the elections tab. I can provide that to the school committee to put in the minutes, and you can publicize that as, through your communications channels if you'd like.
Okay. Thank you.
Clarissa?
Grab your mic.
Oh, I still had a question about the procedure because I'm still not totally clear. So these changes, the language changes, were recommended by the school board? So they're not independent changes that, that are made by, and they, and the changes that the school board recommended were voted on by the school board?
Two years ago.
Okay.
But the sitting, yes, by the school.
So it's just aligning the city charter with what the school board voted for?
I don't, I need, I want to be careful about what I say, too. But it's just to, like Jason, as Jason said, it is to, I think, align charter with policies.
With policies that the school board voted for?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So there's two types. To give you a little bit more detail on process. A city, its constitution is the charter, and that would govern municipal government as well as the schools, which are part of the municipality. Our charter was based on 2005, 2005, yes, was ratified by vote of the population after a two or three-year process. And it was based upon best practices recommended by the National League of Cities. This is all online, too, and I encourage everyone to read the charter. I'll give you an example. There's a lot of, a lot of unknowns, if you would, out there. For example, everybody thinks that the mayor is the council rep. It's actually not the case at all. There, I do not represent the council in anything I do in this body. The school board is committed, is consisted of the mayor and seven other elected individuals. So there's nowhere where it says it's a council representative unless it's appointed by the mayor to represent him or her in their absence. So it's interesting, and again, read the charter. And I think if you read the charter first and then look at these changes, you'll see where these changes actually came from. Now, we can do one of two things. If we, as a city, decide, or the city council decides that our form of government is bad, they can actually form a new charter review committee, which will then create a new charter that will then have to go to vote. Or if the council decides we just need to review it to look for any type of idiosyncrasies, non-compliance, archaic terms, then they can do those recommendations by simple vote and send those changes out to the voters. And that's what we decided to do.
Good. Any other questions?
Can I just, so to clarify, on the ballots themselves, where something appears underlined, that's a change?
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
And then anything that struck through is obviously being removed.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just think people were taken by surprise a little bit. I have had calls and people asking what's going on, and I appreciate your coming today.
Listen, it's completely understandable. Not everybody watches every city council meeting and especially remembers what happens two years ago. It took me a couple of minutes, too, to remember that this was, you know, been going on since 2019, actually. So it's understandable. It's definitely one of those nuances that we can't, there's no way we can communicate this type of information out to all 26,000 people in Auburn effectively.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, committee reports. You have all the agendas, any minutes are there, any questions on any of the standing committees?
I have a question.
Sure. Pat?
On the finance committee report.
Pat, can you, your mic's not very loud right now.
I'm sorry. It's kind of in a weird position. The CIP improvement budgets, I just want a clarification that the monies that you're moving from former years are going into next years. Is that how I'm reading it correctly?
So when we brought the CIP recommended budget forward for fiscal year '23, we said it would be funded with unallocated budgets from former CIP budgets. And you had approved that. So this, closing the loop on that by now putting those projects into individual budgets, and we're doing it in a way so that we can try to close out fiscal year '19 and '20, because right now we have four different budgets open.
Okay.
So there's nothing new in here. You haven't already approved as a project. It's just taking that next step to assure that the budgets we're using are actually approved by the school committee to reflect your prior approval of projects.
All right. My concern was that if this money goes in for next time, will it impact the amount of CIP we're going to get next year? It's probably opening a can of worms, so maybe I'm not appropriate, but I was just thinking in my head, oh, is that going to offset some money?
So even with the expenditures we've made, we still have about $500,000 remaining among the CIP budgets. And so the question that will be a budget conversation is, what are our goals for next year for capital improvements? And do we go out to bond next year for those improvements? Or do we try to push it off a little bit, knowing that the high, last high school principal payment is going to come due for the first time?
Right. Okay, thank you. Great question. Pam?
So I have a couple of questions. One of them is, we have a plow truck on here and a tractor, utility tractor. Since we've combined with the city, I was just wondering, do we still need to have that, or can we use the city's?
No, we need, we need that truck for a couple of reasons. It's replacing an existing truck that's just rusting out from age. While there are some areas where sharing with the city is making a difference for us, like being able to use their street sweeper, in this instance, every one of our maintenance staff needs a utility truck throughout the year, and the city needs their trucks throughout the year, so we don't have additional vehicles available. I would also note, this is, I've worked for a number of different cities and school districts. This is the first time I think I've seen both a city and a school department that largely does all their own plowing of, of streets and school lots. So those trucks are all in use when there's a snowstorm, and so we need to replace it.
And my second question is, the telephone, telephone upgrade, is that to match the city's? Because we had discussed how we were going to match, like, internet and phones with the city.
What year budget are you looking at that?
2021.
That's before my time, but I would, I would, I believe that was the telephone upgrade that allowed us to integrate with the city because I can reach anybody in the city on the four, on just their four-digit extension.
Okay. Thank you.
Questions, Pam? Anyone else? Questions on any of the agenda, the minutes from any of the committees? All right, moving on.
Wait, what did you just ask?
I said if there are any more questions on any of the standing committee minutes or agendas.
I still have a city council question.
So this, section nine, any questions on any of the agendas that got put out or any of the minutes that came out? Okay, all right. Moving on, old business. Next is school committee goals. Can I change a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the Auburn School Committee Goals?
So moved.
Thank you, Pam. Have a second?
Second.
I heard a few over here, so, Pat, I think I heard you. All right, questions, comments on school committee goals? Brian?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to make a secondary motion, actually.
Okay.
On the second bullet under student outcomes. Right now, it currently says district mandated testing, and it says all students will meet or exceed standards by 2025. I don't think it's practical. We're never going to get 100% of every single student, not going to meet that. It's not, it's not, it's, it's setting a bad precedence because we can't meet the goal out of the gate. There's a lot of staff that's actually very anxious about the fact that we've made a goal that says we're going to have 100% by 2025. So the motion or the recommendation is that we replace all students with the school department as a whole will meet, which still puts us in a good position. It still portrays what we're trying to message. It still allows staff to partake in making sure that we meet that goal. But it also sets it up as a practical goal versus saying 100%.
Okay. So your motion is to replace all students with the, with the verbiage of school department will meet.
Yeah, I think you can replace all students with the school department.
By 2025.
Or exceed.
Okay. I'll second that.
I was going to say.
Any questions, comments on, on the switch of all students versus school department? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? All right. Motion passes. So back to the original motion, which, and seconded, was the motion to adopt the Auburn School Committee Goals. Any questions, comments? Any further? Jason?
One comment. One comment, and I've been thinking about this for a couple of weeks now, under communication. And I think I might make a motion, but I want to just bring that up. I think what we're doing is we inverse features and benefits or goals. For example, we talk about communication through various means. The school department will communicate clearly with stakeholders to foster relationships, build and maintain trust, increase engagement, and create a sense of belonging for all school committee members. That, to me, is the goal. And I think it can be wordsmithed into a more concise statement. Communication's a tool to achieve the goal. So is in DEI, so is in a lot of other functions that are really fall under the, the operating, if you would, the strategic or tactical goals of the school administration, i.e. the superintendent. But if our goal is to, and again, I think I just keep coming back to this, to foster relationships, build and maintain trust, and increase engagement, et cetera, the rest of the sentence, maybe the goal should be that, you know, to increase the trust and belief in the public education system of the city of Auburn. And then underneath that is bullets, similar as the first goal, by increasing communication, by increasing our ability to integrate diversity, equity, and inclusion, belonging within our school systems, and I think probably a couple other points in there, too. Does that make sense? Because I want to make sure we're clear, as communication is really kind of a means to an end.
That's a comment. Any other, any other comments all around that? All right, you have no comments back to that, Pat?
I think he has a point because what you're delineating out are things that are, we can actually decide if we've got it or not. This is kind of nebulous. The whole thing is kind of nebulous. But it's including important pieces. So I think what you said makes sense. You're including everything that's here, just the format of what you're doing.
And I don't know what that verbiage is. You know, what, how do you wordsmith that first goal, right? Is it just taking that sentence? Because I think if we look at statistics regarding homeschool versus public school, if we look at charter school populations increasing, and I'm not saying that for Auburn in general, just statewide, these are some of the trends. And we look at why communication's so important, because people have maybe not the highest level of trust or belief or faith in public education, whether that's, you know, micro to Auburn or kind of globally. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but if that's what we're trying to do, and hence, you know, looking at our, our scores on, not niche, is it niche?
Uh huh.
Is it niche?
Yes.
On Zillow? Niche, okay. I'll call, yeah, niche. You know, that's a trust factor, but that's something that we could work towards, too, because that increases the, if you would, the perception of the schools and so forth. So.
I agree. I do think, though, that it just makes it, just kind of, we had talked about not really making too many of the goals to kind of, so that we can attain them all. And I think just naming it communication, student outcomes, a master plan, for me, is fine, but because there's an explanation underneath it. So it's just kind of talking around, we're still going to put there the various means of the school department to communicate clearly with stakeholders, and it's still included in the goal. So I just think we should just, so at this point, I just want to adopt the goals.
Okay. So at this point, the motion is still, we've had some comments about the way the second is written, but there's no, there is no motion. So.
I guess I feel like, I don't disagree that it could be reworded so that it's, that the goal is something about increasing engagement or something around school community, and then you have bullets outlining how you're going to do that. I guess I'm just curious as to whether or not this is the forum in which we spend the time to wordsmith that, or if that's a, if that's us going back to a committee goals workshop to discuss and reword that.
Yes, Dr. Brown, would you like to?
So thank you. The next step in this process is for me to take your broad policy statements because that's really what your goals are, and then operationalize them. And so if they pass tonight, then November, whatever that first meeting is, November 2nd, I will come back with you, to you with my goals. And it will do some of the things that you're looking at now. It will, because this is really the superintendent's lane. You know, you, these are broad policy statements, and I need to bring to you a draft of what it means to move these forward.
Any other questions?
I'd like to make a motion to change the title of the second bullet point under school goals to build and maintain trust in the Auburn public school system.
Does he have a second?
Second.
All right, Brian, seconds. Any questions, comments about that? All right, I'll call for a vote.
I have a comment.
Sure.
I guess the communication isn't, isn't just to external, it's also within, within schools, like with, with teachers, with students, with staff, with community members that don't have students. So I feel like this, this proposal really emphasizes communication with sort of external, like, student, with families and with non-family, people who don't have kids in the system, as opposed to this more thorough communication across all, internal as well, within, within the district. Plus, you know, everything that...
So right now, the motion on the table is to change the verbiage simply from communication to build and maintain in the Auburn, build and maintain trust in the Auburn, sorry, I'm starting reading someone else's handwriting.
That's just bad.
Build and maintain trust in the Auburn public schools. Is that the motion? Okay, and then it was seconded. Any further comments?
I, I think, going back to what you said, Clarissa, I think that covers internal, external. I think it's just, it just, I mean, because we, can you read it again?
Could you read it again, Dr. Brown?
Build and maintain trust in the Auburn public schools, and that would replace the title of communication.
Yeah, I mean, so it's, it's, it is internal and external. I mean, we know that we've got to be able to communicate with staff better. We know we got to communicate with teachers, communicating with parents better. I mean, it, it's very broad. But again, it's also going to come back to, Dr. Brown's going to present exactly what our goals are to move that forward, which is where we want to be.
Pam? Oh, sorry, Brian.
No, I'm good.
I think it completely changes the whole, the whole goal. Because now you've talked about just building trust. Well, what about fostering relationships? What, why is it just the building trust? Why not increase engagement, create a sense of belonging? So I feel like by stating that, you've created a completely different goal than... So I feel like by stating that, you've created a completely different goal than about communication through this. And I think by just making bullets of student outcomes, communication, master plan, that's our goals, and to let Dr. Brown facilitate how it's going to be done, because that is her lane.
If I could just respond to that.
Sure.
When you make a motion, I wanted to change first the header, and then look at any subsequent motions on verbiage changes if needed. But I do believe that, you know, communication is an essential part of building trust, fostering goodwill and so forth, everything that's already still there is probably going to be, and it should be, part of the operational goals of the superintendent. But really, we can go and wordsmith the sub-paragraph, but that can't be in the same motion as the first motion I just made. So first is header, then after that.
No, she's, no.
I know, but you asked a question, why? Why didn't I include everything? Because you had to have a, you have to have a header, and then you can actually make subsequent motions on the verbiage underneath that header. I just didn't want to convolute everything.
I'm going to call for the vote on the change of the verbiage. All those in favor of changing the verbiage choose. Say it one more time, Dr. Brown.
Build and maintain trust in the Auburn public schools, which would replace the title of communication for goal number two.
All those in favor of changing the verbiage. One, two, three, three, opposed.
Opposed.
Yep, opposed. All right, so motion passes, motion fails, I believe, three, five, I believe is the vote, three, five. All right, back to the original motion, which was to draft the Auburn School Committee Goals as written, and I'm going to call for a vote.
I had just...
Okay, all those in favor of adopting the Auburn School Committee Goals as written. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, next is new business. Mark, we're probably going to need you to jump in on this. So a lot of, a lot of these had to do with our last couple of finance committee meetings. First under new business is a motion to approve the contract for audiovisual services projectors for the ELHS construction project for Pro V Systems with a base bid of $328,088.32. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Pat. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Clarissa. All right, questions, comments on this one? Dan?
Is that the existing ones that are already in the schools, or to move them?
So I will let you answer that, Mark.
These will be new short throw, high-resolution projectors that will be installed in each classroom in the school.
That the same as the Pro Vs that are already there?
That's a separate system.
Yeah, that's a separate system, yeah.
Okay, any other questions?
Is that separate system still needed?
I think that's being evaluated now by Peter Robinson, and it is needed. It's a question of to what extent it will be used in the high school versus other schools, but that evaluation is still being made.
Clarissa?
I just had a general question for these things, just especially as we're moving towards the budget workshop, to just have a sense of, is this sort of in the ballpark of what was expected? Is this totally, are things really changing, or is this entirely?
So this is a new form, because there are going to be so many bids coming in front of you, I figured I had to routinize the process, but it may be good in the future to put, I'll be able to put budget to actual. So since this bid has come out, we've been able to put together the full detailed equipment list against the budget, and in total, we have, it's about a $1.8 million allowance for technology, we're at about $1.4 million, so this falls well within the budget. And it's part of the, these are part of the construction budget, so it won't impact our operating budget. These are all part of the allowance on the construction budget.
That's a good question. All right, any other questions on this? All right, I'll call for a vote, please. All those in favor? Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. Thank you. Next is to approve the revised capital improvement budgets as presented. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Clarissa. Questions, comments on this one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion pass, sorry, opposed? Abstaining? Approved? Okay, sorry, it was quick, I didn't say it. I have to look around the horseshoe, give me a... All right, motion passes. Next is a motion to approve two school revolving renovation fund loan applications for the Sherwood Heights elevator lifts and the Edward Little PCB abatement. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Pam. Questions, comments on this one? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? None opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next is to approve entertaining into a performance contract with EEI harriman. Can I have a, do I entertain a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Jason, Brian, you want to back that one up? All right, questions, comments on this one? All right, seeing none, all those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Next is to accept the Esser grant updates and recommended revisions. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Pat first, Brian, I'll take you a second. Questions, comments on that one?
Yeah, I also just had a question about this, which is, this is really broad, but where do these, like, what guides these re-prioritizes? It's like philosophical almost, but like, where do these, and again, it's looking forward to budget. This is maybe really naive, but is this, yeah, what determines these choices on where they're, how they're being reallocated? Does that make sense?
I think it reflects internal discussions of needs that we see within the district. What really, what really pushed this was the fact that we had vacancies in positions, which were significant, just as we have in our operating budget, and that's created additional dollars within the budget, within these federal funds. So there were a number of clear priorities that emerged from that. One of them was to be able to extend our summer programs for both regular and special education for the next two summers. But there, we've said all along that curriculum was a clear priority as an opportunity, and others have emerged more recently, such as placing a new portable at the middle school, or addressing some of the needs of the, of the building project for the high school.
Good question. Any other questions? Pat?
I just want a clarification on the Esser III funding. The last one on the first page talks about adding an LPN in fiscal year 2023 and fiscal year 2024. Does that result in two LPNs, or you want the same LPN?
No, it's the same LPN for two years, to the end of the grant.
Okay, another good question. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor? Seeing none opposed, motion passes. Thank you. Next is, can I entertain a motion to enter into a new lease agreement, then fiscal agent agreement on behalf of the Share Center?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second. Thank you, Pat. Questions, comments on that one?
Do we, I do. Do we have any buildings that belong to the ASD or that belong to the city of Auburn that we could use for the Share Center, as opposed to having them rent a building in Lewiston?
Not on the municipal side.
I'm sorry?
We already reviewed this, not on the municipal side.
Okay.
Not on the school side.
Okay, thank you.
We looked at it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Can I just make a comment? The Share Center services about 500 members, so that's just not serving people in Auburn. So having it located in Lewiston or Turner or any of the other places that it's been, is, just makes it more accessible to other people, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I'll take a call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Congratulations, Lisa, you are all set. Lisa Rodriguez was here from the Share Center this evening as well. All right, do a fantastic job, nice job with the move, too. You're not quite done yet, though, right? Not quite done yet, okay. It sure will be. All right, next is a motion to approve the September financial report. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a second? Second. Thank you, Pat. Any questions, comments on the, on the financial report for August? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we have upcoming meetings are all listed for us. The next regular school committee meeting is on November 2nd, and then all the subcommittee meetings are listed as well. And at this point, I'll call for any future agenda items or requests for information? No? If you don't?
I had, I had a point of clarification still on the ballot question. Can I just not ask it anymore?
You, do you want to go? You can go, I'll go back, I'll let you go back. Is a point of clarification on the ballot question?
I'm still a little bit confused about one thing, which is looking at the minutes from that meeting.
November 2020?
Yeah, it says, so I can't see who else was in attendance. Oh, all councils were present, I can't see that. So it says for the one about quorum, on page two, quorum, the school committee recommends this language be tightened up, right? That's one. And then for voting, so tightened up, was that, is that all? I just don't know what that means. So I'm just wanting, if, so one thing is, I have that question, and then also, I had a clarification in general, which is, I'm getting emails and phone calls asking about this, and I don't know what I'm, some people have asked, what are my views? I don't know what I'm allowed to say, or what I'm not allowed to say, or what, I guess I'm just, I don't know if other people on this committee are confused about this, but I'm still a little confused.
I'll answer your second part while you look at the first part. You can say whatever you want to say. You can do whatever you want to do. So if you like them or don't like them, or that's absolutely your prerogative as an elected official. When I'm here in a public forum, and I always caution everyone not to, you know, step across certain lines, but when you're having private communications with your constituents, feel free to do anything you want.
So on the part where you're asking about the quorum, where the school committee recommended this language be tightened up, typically there's a certain number there, because there is a certain, when we recommended that it be tightened up, meaning give a specific numbers of what would, what would constitute a quorum? How many would be required that would call for a tie? Well, a tie would be obvious, but what would it take for a majority to pass something?
And is that also the recommendation for voting? Because that's, that's on top of voting?
Mm-hmm.
And that's the question I'm getting the most questions about? So I don't know if the school committee prior to November 20th had specific, a specific thing in mind when they meant to tighten the language up.
This is what the language, this is what the language was in the charter at the time, and, or it is right now, still the language that is in the charter at this, at this time. So when it talks about quorum, it's talking about us here, and voting in here when we're here in the meeting, or what would constitute a quorum. We needed a certain amount of people in order to be able to do the voting, and so how many people would we need in order to be able to hold the meeting?
No, I meant the roll call vote, because it's above, so if I understand this correctly, italicized, is it about the one below, or the one about?
Can you give me a number that you are looking at?
So under 4.5, it says the school committee recommends tightening it up. Is that about 4.7, or about 4.5? Because underneath that, the, it says the school committee, underneath 4.7, the school committee recommends the city solicitor review this language to ensure its compliance on selection of superintendents. So I understand that refers to 4.9. So tightening it up refers to 4.7, then, and that's a pretty big thing, to tighten up. I don't know what the change was.
Where it says the school committee recommends this language be tightened up, I believe that goes to 4.5, the quorum.
So there's a change in the voting that's on the ballot, and I don't, I don't see where that, where that's coming from. I mean, I don't see where the change in the voting is coming from in the ballot, and I just want to be able, for people to be clear on what that is, because that's what I'm getting so many questions about.
What constitutes a quorum, and it's not on the ballot?
No, no. The roll call vote being, needing four affirmative votes.
So then at this point, because I am not the city clerk and I don't want to step out, that would be a question for the city clerk, Sue Clement Delaire downstairs. I would ask why these city council meeting minutes recommend this language but get on the ballot? We are seeing these questions. Well, I can't answer that for you. I'm not, I'm not 100% sure.
Yeah, so what's, what's in the minutes is what's currently in the charter, and then the recommendation was the school committee recommends this language be tightened up. So it then went to the city attorney who reviewed it, and, and that's where the suggested change is then coming from.
Right, so I guess my question is, the school committee did not recommend that language that's on the ballot, specifically?
That I don't know about, because did this come back to the school committee after the recommended changes were listed?
Not to my recollection.
Before it went on the ballot?
Not to my recollection.
So that roll call vote isn't school, isn't policy for us? I guess that's what I'm confused. I know I could look this up, but I'm just really confused.
The roll call vote is what's currently in the charter now. The only thing that's being removed on the ballot is the line, the five affirmative votes